With it being just after 6:30 on Tuesday, April 28, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. And just as a reminder that on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law for evil public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order released public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provision to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body through adequate alternative means, which may include providing public access through telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video. So we are video, uh, I'm sorry, we are recording this meeting, both video and audio. Hopefully, we have put the link to our Zoom meeting on the school district website, and we will also be posting this meeting on the school district website most likely by tomorrow. As, just for the record, all five members are currently on the meeting. And the first item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve our March 30th, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Sorry, I second.
All right, so there's a motion. Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did.
Sheila made the motion and Mrs. Siddiqui seconded. Yeah, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarron.
Abstain.
Member Siddiqui.
Yep.
Member Blythe.
Yes.
Member Napparada.
Kathy, can you hear us?
Kathy, maybe you can respond via chat.
You're not supposed to.
Oh.
So, since Mrs. Napparada unfortunately is unable to, we're unable to hear her at this point, we will skip over her and I will vote yes. And therefore, the motion to approve the minutes does pass three to nothing. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's reports. Good evening, Dr. Goggin.
Good evening, everyone. I have to start out by saying how much I miss our normal routines and seeing everybody in person. I miss our students and our staff. I have a lot to share out tonight on the agenda. I'm gonna start by just giving a snapshot of where we're at in terms of our remote learning plans and what's going on, with a reminder of what, how much has happened in the last month. On March 12, we closed schools. On March 15, Governor Baker announced that schools would be closed for three weeks till April 6. And on March 16, by March 16, we knew schools were closing. We had a remote learning plan up and running across the district. We were doing and providing enrichment to all of our students. On March 30, we received the remote guidance from the Department of Education. And I'm pleased to say that what we have in plan, what we had in plans, met all of the requirements for that. The Department of Education wanted us to provide enrichment activities, to extend the learning that students had already done in schools. And our teachers, you know, hit the ball out of the park and hit a home run with their day-to-day connections. On April 1, as you know, Governor Baker forth, and then today, he extended that order until May 18. Am I frozen?
You were for a moment.
Was I frozen?
Yes.
Okay, so April 21, Governor closed schools for the year. And on April 24.
Frozen again, if you can hear me.
The second set of guidance from the Department of Education guards remote learning. That second set at learning, the intent standards, and they are the, okay, I'll go slow. It's the win. Now. I'm still focused. Frozen?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's been windy.
Am I frozen still?
I can hear you, but the screen is broken.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll just talk if you can hear me. Maybe if I shut my, my video off, will that help?
The mic, yes.
Does that help? Okay, fine. So on, okay, great. So I'm, I'm just trying to give a snapshot of all the different changes that have happened over the course of the last month. You know, we just received the second phase of the Department of Education guidance on remote learning. And this phase is a little different than the first phase. The first phase really was focused on enrichment activities, providing students and families ways to extend what they already learned. The prerequisite content standards are really essential standards that the department has outlined for critical skills that students need to know for next year. So our teachers were just given those standards yesterday because last week they were on vacation. And they are working on looking at them as a grade level to outline what new content areas and how they're going to be doing that. We're going to be doing this in a collaborative fashion. So families will be expecting some changes in what's going on, and we will be keeping people informed. It's important that, I remind you, that new content has been delivered from the high school to high school students since March. And with us moving on to new content, we are making a concerted effort to distribute Chromebooks to our grades three, four, and two. And we are going to be notifying parents about that safe pickup, much like our drive-through pickups for the food distribution centers. Well, those will, that will start next week. Also, I just want to state that remote learning is not synonymous with being plugged into a computer. And I think that's really an, an important thing that we all stop and pause and think about. There are many ways that we can continue the learning now that we know that we will be out of school for the rest of the year. Finding that balance is truly important. I, we certainly understand that all families have different challenges and different time schedules, and we want to be respectful of that. So I want to reassure parents that are listening, they can still expect to be able to reach their teachers every day between nine o'clock and one o'clock, and more information's going to be coming out as to whether and how we are going to be doing the virtual lessons, whether they're live lessons or pre-recorded lessons. We have not finalized that. We may leave that up to teachers. But we will be distributing a permission slip to all of our families. That is in, that covers us for privacy with all of our students, and so that will be coming. I also want to let you know that the Bartlett High School has determined that they will be using first and second quarter to determine GPA and class rank. Third quarter grades were sent out, or on Power Schools, and teachers are collecting work and marking it as credit or no credit. So that, the students are motivated and participating. And once they started to do that, they have informed me that they saw an uptake in student participation. I do believe that when we provide, start to provide new content over at the Webster Middle School and at the Park Avenue, we're going to see an uptake in our student participation. I would like to say that from what I've been told from the district leadership team, we've been tracking how our students are participating, how many days they're responding. You know, our number one goal remains safety and making sure that we have a connection with families. And when we don't, we take the necessary steps to, you know, call, reach out, have a council call, utilize our school resource officer to make sure everyone's fine. That during this crisis, that is our, our primary goal, safety. And making sure that we have that ongoing social emotional connection for our families. As we were briefly talking about before the meeting, you know, everyone, every single one of us is undergoing a crisis. Our whole lives have changed. We're staying home. Our social connections are cut off. And we have to consider how families are dealing with and what their needs are. And that comes first, making sure that we, we pay attention to that. And with the commissioner's guidance that just came out, that was one of the, one of the areas that they wanted to focus on, was just really making sure that we have a good understanding about what the fundamental needs are of our families and working around that. So that's a bit of an update on the remote learning. I do want to say that we are all working really hard, and this is a challenging time. And it's, it's a time when, you know, we're trying our best to keep our students engaged and our families happy. And, and there are competing needs out there. There are families that are saying there's too much stuff coming home, and there are families that are saying, when is new content going to be coming home? So that, that, that makes all of this very challenging. So our goal is to provide the resources and make sure that our families have them and can utilize them when they want with their students. I don't know if you have any questions about that before I move on to another, some other topics.
Mr. Chair.
Lessons of life.
Um, Dr. Goggin, I know that you said that, you know, permission slips will be sent out soon to kind of cover whether it's going to be Zoom or whatever platform you're going to use, and that the teachers are going to take a collaborative approach to how instructional will be delivered. Has any thought been, been put in place, you know, about maybe how math could be taught, right? Because delivering new content in, in math, I would think, okay, from my own perspective, because math is a challenge for me, I would think that that would be a challenge for any child, right? If there wasn't, I don't know, a live instruction or a pre-recorded instruction. Has anything, you know, versus say history, right, where you can kind of read and pull out the facts? Is anything, is there a vision that you have around what that would look like? Maybe, you know, if so, I was just wondering if you could share it, and if not, if you haven't gotten that far, that's, that's.
We, we actually have had these conversations ongoing for a while. We expect, we know and been told that there are live lessons going on at the high school through Google meets. We expect with the new guidance, once the teachers digest what the prerequisite content standards are, that they are going to be working in teams more readily to be sharing the responsibility of lessons. So, for example, a math lesson could be live, and the kids could break, break away for a bit to do some independent work and then regroup with the teacher. That's one way of doing it. Another way of doing it is having a pre-recorded lesson, having families and students watch it at their leisure around their own personal schedules, which is something that we may be leaning to because we know for a fact that many of our high school students are working.
Correct.
During this. So we want to make things accessible, but you could do a pre-recorded lesson, have the students watch it, and then regroup in a live session where there's that two-way conversation going on. And that could happen at an edding grade level. I do want to give a shout out to our teachers because the foundational structures that we have in place currently, and I'll give a shout out to the middle school, Ms. Peterson, since you're here. Grades five and six, from what I've seen, have organized their display of information in such an easy way for students and families to access, and that's really our goal. I think the challenge, Blythe, in all of this is that we've been tasked to build a new system as we're doing it. And we take this very seriously. We want the best for all of our students. We are reflecting at the end of every week what worked and what didn't work. We've been waiting for the guidance from the Department of Education to move on to new content for the elementary and the middle school for two parts. You know, our main goal over the last month was making sure that we connected with the 1,800 students that we have, and that we've had, we've developed that system of communication. And for the most part, we have successfully done that. And the second part is, even though remote learning is not synonymous with online learning, we do want to have and use some of our programs and make sure that our elementary students, grades two, three, and four, have one-on-one devices at their own homes. So next week, we will be asking parents to drive through and pick them up, and we'll go from there. I, I do, out of respect for our teachers, want them to take a look at these prerequisite content standards to determine what has already been taught. And if, you know, in, I, I, I'll take some of the commissioner's words. He, you know, typically in, in April and May, we're spending a lot of time on MCAS testing, right? There's a lot of time taking assessments. So now we have that time back. And now the teachers can really focus on, we have seven weeks left, what are those core areas that the students need to have for success for next year? So we're entering that, the second phase of this. But we did not hold up the high school because kids need to earn credit with new content.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm, I would be remiss to shout out the amazing teamwork that has happened over the course of this crisis. Our teachers are paraprofessionals, our cafeteria staff, our custodians, our administrators. People may not know it, but they're really putting a lot of time and energy and work into holding our district together and making sure that we're communicating with our students. There's a lot of, there's a lot of teamwork and pride going on.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, just, just a point of clarification. Dr. Goggin, you mentioned that remote learning and online learning are not synonymous. For the benefit of those that might be listening, can you help us sort of draw that distinction?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. It's a good question. What we don't want to do is make remote learning three hours of students sitting in front of a computer and doing worksheets. This is an opportunity to be creative, to tie real-life experiences into learning, whether that's cooking a pizza in your house with your parents and measuring things and, and charting that, or taking a survey with your family and doing a graph based on their, your survey questions. This opportunity to turn learning into something that's more meaningful for our students is presenting itself in many different ways. So, sitting in front of a computer to do learning is not what we want to see happen. But we do have multiple programs available through all of the work that we've done over the last three years, accessible to our students. And, and it's, it, we want to make sure that they have access to those programs. We've been updating our resources. WGBH has tremendous resources available for families. We have been thinking about changing the way our website looks to make it easier for parents to locate those things. And so all of this is a project in motion. Did I answer your question?
I think so. It sounds like what you're saying is that, you know, some of the activities that, that kids are doing every day can relate to learning, and just simply doing worksheets isn't necessarily going to deliver the new content that kids need. I guess I'm wondering about the balance between new content for kids and doing that in a natural way. And it sounds like that's what you're, you're looking to arrive at.
That's our goal. That is our goal. And, and every single person, teachers included, are learning how to do this. Students and teachers on either end are learning how to do this. You know, there are wonderful things that are happening across our district. There are, students are sending in artwork to a virtual online display at the high school. Kids are doing exercise with the PE teacher through a dance routine. Those are the types of things that we're talking about. Having worked previous to coming here as a executive director of a Montessori school, I, I can draw on my experience from that and say that hands-on learning, that project-based learning is something that we can utilize, fully knowing what a typical day is in a student's life and accessing different means other than sitting in front of a computer. With us opening the doors for virtual two-way communication, I think students will be able to ask real-time questions to teachers. And I think our teachers are longing to see, actually see the faces of our students. And the, the students are longing to see each other. This will be a, a new area for us. But we're gonna try.
Just one more sort of question, I suppose, related to all of this. Is there any plan for maybe balancing that, that real-life experience with, with a little bit of structure? Maybe like a Zoom or a Google Classroom where, where there is a bit of a structure during the day, where kids are getting together with their teacher and having some instruction, and then also being able to do the other things in addition to that?
Yes, that has been discussed, and so I just, we've been toying with that from the very beginning. And some teachers have set schedules for their kids and some do not. So right now, grade-level teams are meeting to decide what's the best way to do that. One of the things that I, I know many districts, we've been working, I've been collaborating with other superintendents, there's a set schedule for the day. At 8:30, there's a morning meeting, and then at 9, there's English, and then math. One of the concerns that we have with that are some of our students, especially at the younger age, need to have an adult around them to help them access information through, through, you know, a computer learning. And some of our families are still working. So what we don't want to have happen with remote learning is to isolate a group of kids that may not have that opportunity in the day. So I think the answer may be finding a balance between all of that, doing some pre-recorded lessons, and then having some live throughout the nine o'clock to one o'clock timeframe available. And I want the teachers to be part of that solution and plan. So more information is going to be coming soon. They just got the information through an email from me and Monday, and they're meeting all week long in different groups. And the district leadership team will be meeting on Friday to come up with what it's going to look like for our, our district.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks. That's, it's really helpful. As someone that's gotten a lot of questions from parents around, when are we going to, you know, have that, that structure? It sounds like there's, there's a lot of thought going into that, and certainly, we don't want to have, you know, that disparity between kids that have access and have somebody available to help them and not. So I, I definitely can appreciate the tough spot you're in. Thank you.
I, I do think it's a balance that we need to find. I think we need to do a little of both. But without our teachers buying in and having some voice in this, it's not going to be successful. And I want to be courteous to them and give them an opportunity to help create what it's going to look like. So, because they're, they're going to own it. So I have some other information that I would like to share with you before we move on to personnel. I know one of the other hot topics of concern out in the public is what are we doing for our seniors? And first, I'd like to say that we are heartbroken for our seniors. No one expected to have this be, you know, this has kind of been dragged out. And people get some hope that something's going to change, and then, like today, the news changes and the stay-at-home order is extended. So it's been a progression of steps in that direction. I must assure you that we could never not do a graduation. And I know there's many different things out and about in the community. I do want to give some facts right now. We, of course, are going to have some graduation for our students. We are looking and having detailed conversations about how we can celebrate some of the things that have already, that would have occurred, like Super Team, awards nights, and how to be creative to make those events memorable. I ask that parents and students participate in the process with Mr. Thomas and the team at the high school in giving their feedback and having their voices heard on what makes sense for them. We have been working with surrounding high schools to see what they're doing. There is only one at this point in our area that has made a final decision that they will be doing a virtual graduation. There are meetings occurring this week with senior advisors and the athletic director, and we have some, some surprises that we don't, that I don't want to share tonight of how we can celebrate our kids. We love the students, and there is nothing that would get in our way of celebrating their success as Bartlett High School seniors. So I, I wanted to put that out there, and I encourage families to reach out to Mr. Thomas and myself. We are here to help.
Dr. Goggin.
Yes.
As a very emotional parent of a senior, I thank you for those words. I, you know, have been, you know, approached, as you know, by parents, and, you know, I've assured them that, that the administration and the teachers will, will make something happen. You know, I don't doubt at all that you all love the students as much as the parents do, and you miss them and you want this for them. So definitely, you know, just, just wait for the communication. But, you know, we're all, we're all hopeful. We're all excited to hear what you guys have to come up with. So thank you for working so hard and so continuously on this.
We want people involved, and, and you will be, you know.
Yeah, you have many parents that are, that will completely help.
There will be no way around it. Everybody will be involved. I do want to let you know that at today's Department of Education meeting, the Board of Education approved allowing districts to certify course completion and waive the MCAS for competency determination for seniors. I'm waiting for that in writing. I watched the meeting today, but that will be coming down the road. I do want to let you know that. I do also want to let parents know that the, you know, we're trying to move as many things along as we can. The Nichols Honors applications have been extended to May 15 for our students. The applications can be found on the Bartlett High School webpage. I know that the middle school and the high school are working on course selections for next year. It will be coming home to families soon. The teachers are making recommendations. I do also want to give a very big, loud shout out to our cafeteria staff, who are really just angels with, and Monique, you know, we, we are blessed with all of them. Our food distribution centers service approximately 600 meals a day. We have combined the Webster Middle School and the Bartlett High School. We have a new drop-off center at Head Start from 11. We have a new drop-off center at Head Start from 11 to 12. We also have Park Ave and North Village. There's a real need in our community, and we are so proud of those efforts that are going on. Absolutely. I want to give a a nice round of applause and introduce you to Ms. Heidi Peterson. Ms. Heidi Peterson has agreed to become our next Webster Middle School principal on July 1st of 2020. Mrs. Peterson has been working, as you know, as our assistant principal and will be replacing Mr. Zajak, who will be leaving the district at the end of June. I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Zajak and thank him for his years of service and dedication to our students and staff. We will miss him. Let me tell you a little bit about Ms. Peterson before we let her say a few words. She has a bachelor's degree from, oh, my gosh, I'm not going to be able to say that, Heidi.
Susquehanna.
Thank you very much. A master's degree from Worcester State and a CAGS in Educational Leadership from Simons College. And she, before joining us, she has been the assistant principal at Tantascwood High School, Mary Wells Middle School, Elmwood Street Middle School, and Burgess Elementary School. She's taught pre-K through grades eight, coached middle schools, cross-country and high school track teams. And when she's not working, she loves to be outside. We're pleased to have you have you move up on our team. And we've been pleased with your work since she's joined us. And I'd like to congratulate you.
Thank you. I am very excited to continue. I work at Webster Middle School. And I'm looking forward to continue working with district and school teams and carrying out the vision to move Webster Middle School in a positive direction.
Dave, your mic's off. Felt good to say that, Dave.
It did, didn't it? Where is your undergrad college located?
In a small town called Sealands Grove, Pennsylvania. It's in central western Pennsylvania, along the Susquehanna River.
Well, let me just say on behalf of the school committee, congratulations. And we obviously wish you the best. I know you're inheriting a very strong team at the middle school. And I've heard a lot of great things about your months so far that you've been with us as the assistant principal. So I think I can speak for my colleagues in wishing you the best. And we're all very excited about you joining the district leadership team.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Heidi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I will continue with my report and give a quick shout out to all of our administrative assistants across the district. It was Administrative Assistance Day on April 22nd. And we want to thank all of them. Our school-based and central office administrative assistants have just been, again, dynamite through this crisis. I want to let families know that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, May 4th through May 8th. I encourage students and families to send their teachers messages of love and support during the week. With our other updates, I wanted to let you know that, as you know, we received the ST Math Grant this past year. And that's a non-verbal math software program for CADA V. And it teaches math. It's a supplemental program. What you've seen, that organization is backed by some very generous donors who have put an outreach out to see if there were anything at schools needed. So Ms. Jill Chapdeline never misses a chance to get us free materials. And in conjunction with John O'Neill and Monique, they put together a list of technological devices that would be safe, meaning if they were dropped, they would have cover for garden and first graders. So we have put in for that grant, and I will let you know if we are accepted. I did receive information with regards to the Park Ave and Mafray safety video that was submitted into the Boston Center for Corporate Citizenship. Unfortunately, we did not win. But Linda and I are also planning for another year. So we will, there'll be more to come on that. I did want to let you know, and I should have probably let you know when I was talking about the remote learning and the phases, the different phases of what we're doing. Special education, as you know, we're obligated to meet free and appropriate education and service our students. And Mrs. Barris and her have been working very, very hard. And I just want to, if I could, share my screen for a second to show you what a service learning plan is going to look like. These are new, that are going to take a lot of time. And bear with me. Here we go. To document what we're doing for our students. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so these are our student remote learning plans that will document what we're doing. This is a heavy task for our special educators. They'll be taking 25% of their caseload. And starting with that, I'm just kind of scrolling through so you can see how comprehensive they are. I wanted to let you know that. And that concludes my report tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions on anything that I share.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Dr. Gogan? Let me just take a moment to reiterate what you have said earlier as far as, and thank the entire school district, all the staff and administrators and custodians and assistants and cafeteria workers. As we said, probably from the first time we met after the pandemic really got bad, this is very, very new for everybody. So I just want to state, I think, on behalf of my colleagues and the entire committee, our sincere appreciation for all the work that's going in. As you've said many times, making sure, first of all, that students are safe and trying to make sure that they have a safe living environment that's as conducive as possible to learning. And especially, you know, the teachers that I don't believe, for the most part, have ever had any formal training or experience in trying to educate a wide range of students from, you know, the ages of five all the way up to 18 or 19 via all these wonderful programs, such as the one we're using right now called Zoom. So just thank you very much for your efforts. And hopefully, we will continue to move forward, as I'm sure you and your team will, and get through the rest of the school year as best we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Can I just add a comment, just so that you know? As we move to the next phase of remote learning, we will, we are not going to be using Zoom with our students. It does not have the proper privacy protections with FreeZoom. So we will be using Google Meets. And I just wanted to be clear about that.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perandale.
Good evening, Mr. Hearn. How are you tonight?
Good, good. Thank you, I think.
Good, good. Getting used to this virtual Zooming. We've been at it for a few weeks now. We're starting to feel like pro a little bit here. At our April 14th School Committee meeting, we talked about being, having a meeting with the MSBA on Wednesday morning following that meeting. We were accepted into feasibility study, I believe, when the email was sent out notifying everybody after that. So we're excited to move into the next phase of our project. We were immediately put into a training on Thursday after the Wednesday meeting, Module 2, that is our OPM training, and talks about going through the steps of the feasibility study. So we have a school building meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 4 o'clock. It will be a virtual meeting, like all our other meetings have been. We look forward to working through the OPM phase. That is the Owner's Project Manager. They are essentially, are, they're looking out for Webster Public Schools' best interest. They work for us. So they will be our guide through the entire process of hiring an architect and going through the construction phase all the way to the end of a project. So it's an important part, and we want to get it right. So we work closely with the MSBA. They gave us a timeline that we'll be working through, and we'll be discussing that at tomorrow's Building Committee meeting. We are shooting, the MSBA gave us a couple of dates to shoot for. They gave us an August 3rd meeting date and a September 14th meeting date that we can schedule a meeting for the MSBA to approve the OPM. So we are shooting for the August meeting. We have a timeline set out that we'll be reviewing tomorrow night. I put in the tentative schedule in your packets. I'm not going to read through it. We will be going through that tomorrow with the Building Committee, looking for a subcommittee that will represent the Building Committee in hiring the OPM. So we'll review as we start to have regular meetings. I think they'll become a regular event moving forward as we move through this phase. I'll bring back any information and keep you updated on the process. Do you have any questions? No? Okay. Next item on my report is the transportation update. As you know, with schools being closed, transportation and buses, yellow buses, are not running. The state has put out some guidance that they wanted districts to continue to pay transportation vendors across the state. As you know, it's difficult enough already field. There's not a lot of competition in that field. And it's very difficult to get drivers. So the state is looking at this. They want to be sure that these companies are still viable and still have employees when that day comes that we're going to go back. They want them there, ready to roll. On the flip side of that, we understand that there are things built into the contract that we're not using right now. We're not using fuel. We're not using miles. We're not using wear and tear on vehicles. And there are other things that are added in that make up that entire cost. So it has been recommended to us through the state to join in groups, which we've done by vendor. We have a transportation, there are about 10 or 11 other districts. They have AA as their main vendor. We work together as a group. We nominated two people to represent us in negotiations. I need to give a special shout out to Daniel Dede from Wachusett and Patrick Collins from Shrewsbury, the business managers there. They negotiated on our behalf and met with Ron from AA. When we hit the closure, Ron, the day after it was announced, Ron had laid off all his employees, thinking he was doing them a favor. He wanted them to be able to start collecting as soon as possible. And then, as things progressed, a couple of districts announced that they might be paying their drivers and keeping them on 100%. And things started to evolve statewide. So we have worked out a deal with Ron that districts would be willing to pay 75% of the transportation costs and regularized transportation. He's going to make his drivers whole. He was already continuing to pay the health insurance and dental insurance. But they will no longer collect and be on unemployment. He's going to carry them, because they were laid off right away in March, he's going to carry them through the summer. So it's kind of offset the unemployment for him. So typically, he lays off his drivers in the summertime because he's not using them. They can collect unemployment. So he's kind of going to do the reverse. They've been collecting now, and he's going to pay them throughout the summer. As you know, our transportation sits on the town side of things. It's in the town budget. So I have been working closely with Doug, keeping him informed. I actually got permission from him before we entered into negotiations, so he was comfortable with that. I reviewed the agreement with him when we were done, and he is good with that. I just felt it was, I put the, you can hear my dog outside, I think. She's yelling at me to come in, barking at the door. So I put the agreement in the packet for you tonight that we've worked up. You know, again, this is on the town side. I really don't need school committee emotion, but I would request a motion, just school committee to support the agreement. All the other business managers are going back to their committees and will be looking for agreement. This isn't an all or one. We didn't just agree to a group, that everybody had to be in on a group to have this going by, forward with Ron. He understands that we all have our own committees. We all have our own town accountants, and that these would be agreed upon by each community. But we think it's a fair deal, and it follows the state recommendations to keep us going. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair? Mo, is is there an ending date, you know, hoping that this doesn't continue into the fall? Is there, you know, I know you said through the summer, but is that, you know, a final date? And then we would have to, you would have to go back to, to take a look at this again? If the fall, if something happens in the fall?
Yeah, this agreement is ending June 30th. Ron is paying his drivers through the summer, just because that's typically a layoff time. And he already laid them off. So he's trying to offset his costs, is what we're, you know, we're agreeing to make the drivers whole. So, you know, the whole point of this is to make sure we have drivers and we have buses on day one of school so that we can come in. We are all hopeful that, yeah, we are going to be back in the fall. That might look a little different. We don't know yet. But, you know, we're hoping for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So based on what I've read in a couple of conversations I had with Mrs. Perandale privately, part of the, the reason for the recommendation behind the state is if school districts do not pay a portion of the remainder of their contract, a lot of these bus companies will not be in business coming. So I personally, you know, felt it was fair. And the percentage, I think, based on all the expense information that was shared with the negotiation team, seems like a fair. And again, we don't want to just spend money unnecessarily, but it is in the budget, and it is something that has already been allocated for that purpose.
And I think, you know, I didn't mention that this is just the yellow buses, the big yellow buses that we have. As you know, in special ed, we have multiple vendors. AA is our biggest, but we have Vanpool, and we have, you know, County Cab. There are many, North River Collaborative. And they're all kind of working and making agreements with individuals also at the state's request. Just on the yellow buses alone, 75% will save the town about $58,000, $55,000, in that range. So that's just for the yellow buses, but there'll be additional savings in that. So I know that on the town side, that'll help because, you know, we're looking at a couple of different areas, like unemployment and stuff, where they're going to have deficits. So this will help offset some of that cost.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McCarron.
You know, it makes sense, obviously, for a lot of reasons. And, I mean, AA has been our bus vendor for as long as I can remember. And they've been a very good vendor, a very good partner, really, through the years. And I think all of our contracts with them have been negotiated well and has been give and take on both sides. So they, you know, and it makes sense. We need, we need the buses, and we need to keep these people in business. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second, sorry, I couldn't unmute.
So there's been a motion by Mr. McCarron, second by Mrs. Blythe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarron?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui? Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Napparada?
Yes.
Chairman Hearn?
Yes, and for those that are not right next to their computer, we did hear Mrs. Napparada say yes. The motion passes humanely. Thank you very much, Mrs. Perandale, and your other business managers for the work on this.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your support.
Any other questions from Mrs. Perandale related to her overall report? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is old business. First item under old business is Superintendent Evaluation Presentation of Goals. As the committee will recall, we agreed last meeting. that we would begin Dr. Gogan's annual evaluation this meeting with the hope and the goal of finalizing and presenting her final evaluation at our next meeting. So the first step in that was for Dr. Gogan to present her evaluation of the goals that were set last year. So with that said, I turn it over to Dr. Gogan.
Well, certainly, this is an unusual time. As you know me, I'm in year three, I'm a hard worker and I keep my data and my evidence binders pretty full. So when we get, I could roll them in from the wheelbarrow. I did put together a very lengthy list of things that I could think of during this crisis moment that provided you evidence of what I'm doing. I sure hope that you see evidence of my leadership every time you see me and especially during the course of this crisis. This crisis has really shown me that the work that we have done over the course of the last three years was well needed in Webster. And I say this to the district leadership team. Can you imagine if we didn't have the resources and the structures set for our content areas? And we had this crisis? So everything that we've done over the course of a year, and I continue to say we, I may be the leader, but there's a we here, has, is being put into full use right now. And the teamwork and the focus, it's on instructional leadership for everyone. But during the crisis, we don't want remote learning to become stressful for anyone. We want people to remain safe. I can read this lengthy, lengthy list to you. I can point out some specific areas. I think one of the things that, understandably, one for instructional leadership that I'm really working hard on is to make sure that, I'm always been good at clear communication, but one of the things that's happening now is that communication is over communicated and repeated and making sure that we talk about it as a team so that when we present in public with what the next steps are, we are united. I'm sure you watch the news. I'm sure you see the discrepancies in how people feel about COVID-19. Are we, should we be getting back? Should stores open? It's, there's polar opposites ways to interpret this crisis. The one thing that I'm really proud of under my leadership is that we continue to be united. And there's a lot of work that goes behind that to make sure that questions are answered, voices are heard, different perspectives are taken into consideration. And if you were to read this page of evidence, you will see some of the evidence of the instructional leadership, management and operations. It's a little uncomfortable for me to talk about myself in detail, but this document has many of the things that have been accomplished that Webster needs to continue to grow. And I think under my leadership, that's one of our perspectives is ongoing growth, ongoing reflection, ongoing communication, providing an environment for people to be heard, listening to different perspectives in a respectful manner and taking into consideration those perspectives to come up with different solutions. We've come a long way in Webster and, you know, I'm not about standardized testing, as you know, but the district itself has moved out of, in need of assistance. And that hasn't happened in years. So I think that speaks loudly. I'm happy to answer any questions or share this document online if you would like me to. Roll through it. I just would like a little feedback here.
So from my perspective, and again, I don't intend to speak for my colleagues. Certainly, we have the information. I've read it prior to the meeting. I don't believe there's a need to go through it line by line, but I would certainly open it up to any questions or comments that the members might have related to this document. I would just ask any comments related to an overall evaluation to be held up until we complete the evaluation. But any questions specifically related to the information that Dr. Gogan presented to us this evening? And by the way, as an aside, I think it might be great to share this online since we're unable to provide copies of our documents on the table. Would walk in, since we get a lot of people to attend our meetings. But I think it's, it's very valuable for folks to be able to look at what we're looking at in addition to our own experience, the actual concrete evidence that you've shared with us. So I would recommend posting it. And again, any questions or comments from my colleagues on the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCarron.
So I'll second that. I agree, we should put it online for people. You know, we sort of ventured into a new virtual world. So more people on the computer at their homes and probably would be more apt to take a look at it. And I think they should. It is very detailed. Like you, Mr. Hurtin, I read it and I'll have to read it several more times to it all. But I want to thank you, Dr. Gogan. It's very detailed. I appreciate the information, that's what we need. And it's, you know, as you go through it, it reminds you of all the different steps. But I think in light of, in light of what we're going through now, I think, I think the way our district has come together under your leadership, and I know it's a team, I get that. But, you know, that doesn't happen by accident, you know? And I said it before, I talked to some of my work colleagues who have not had the same experience in their, in their school districts with their children. So to me, you know, the evidence is evident. I will read it, read it through several more times, but thank you again.
You're very welcome. I do have a little visual for you, a very quick one, if I can just take you down a little memory lane very quickly.
Oh, there we go, okay.
Okay. So I just think it was, it's apropos that we started the beginning of our school year with Mr. Chad Hyman coming to see us. And I'm sure many of you remember his very powerful message about noticing people, helping people. And I can't help but go back to that during this crisis and how we are all pausing to do that for, for other people. I, as I said, we're all about community in Webster and we're seeing that in everything that's happening across the board. Our partnerships with the town, the police, the EMS, the Board of Health, getting ready for this crisis, having everybody at the table at the Webster Public Schools. It's, we are a very unique and wonderful community. The resources that are, have been purchased over the last three years, the way that we have restructured our budget to support the most important thing, which is learning. And our teachers have been tremendous and they still happen. We're still providing support, professional development. And it goes on and on. When teachers ask us for what they need, we do our best to get them what they need. Our kids make us proud all the time. We are keyed into creating learning environments that are safe and supportive, especially now. These materials are helping all of our teachers as they try to figure out the best ways to provide engaging activities for our students while they're home. We were just talking about these STEM kits today, Monique.
We were.
This would have been much longer if we were at work, so you should be happy. It's almost done. Teamwork. As you may or may not know, we've been tracking the students that do not have internet access or remote, any kind of remote access. And the elementary school has put together hard packets. And those hard packets are being printed by Monique and mailed to families, sometimes dropped off, to families to ensure students have work to do. So I did want to share that. There are those packets. So I figured I'd break it up a little bit with a visual.
Is that?
That's it.
That's it, all right. Any questions or comments from the committee for Dr. Gogan? Well, again, thank you for putting, I know you're extremely busy. You were busy before. I didn't think you could get any busier, but you really, you know, we appreciate it.
I'm not going to tell you what my husband says. You must love work more than me because I never see you and you're home.
And you're home. So with that being said, the next step in Dr. Gogan's evaluation process, in the next day or two, we will email you the evaluation form. For those of you, I think everyone was on the committee last year, it's the same form with the updated goals. We will also email you the rubric that is provided by Desi. I would ask, certainly, if anyone has any questions or wants to follow up directly with Dr. Gogan, she would love to schedule a time one-on-one with any members. And then I would ask that you please have your evaluation completed a week from today, which would be Cinco de Mayo, with my hope that it would actually be completed by the Friday of next week, but I won't tell you that publicly. And then we will collab, we'll put all the evaluations into one final document and that will be presented at our next school committee meeting, which is on May 12. But seriously, you can get it to me as close as possible to May 5th. That way it'll give us time to make sure that we get, take all five evaluations and put it into one. All evaluations are public documents. It's just, I think, we've done it, maybe, I think, even prior to me joining the committee, but certainly since I've been on the committee, we take all the evaluations, put it into one summary document. And then that is what is reviewed and discussed at our next meeting. And as I think I said last year, the superintendent is very fortunate enough to have her evaluation done in public, which unfortunately is part of the job, but that's the way it is. Again, thank you very much for putting the information together. And I look forward to receiving all the members' individual evaluations by next Tuesday or Wednesday. Next item under old business is FY '20 budget update. Dr. Gogan or Mrs. Perangeli or both?
Well, Mrs. Perangeli.
All right.
Thank you. So typically, we, as you know, we finished third quarter at the end of March. I would be giving you a third quarter update. Things have been a little different and crazy, as you know, as we've had, heading into the end of year. So I'm really just starting to dive into the budget and look for end of year projections right now, which is why you didn't get a copy of the budget. I just wanted to give you some overviews as to what I'm looking at. As we're going through the budget, I am taking a look at all of our heating costs and utility costs. As you know, we expect some cost savings there. We were already seeing a little cost savings coming into the third quarter in our salary and they were holding steady in our salary savings. And our, our special ed tuition was holding steady to that point. So I don't expect to see many move-ins or outs now with the way things have changed. So I'm pretty confident that those numbers are close. I have tasked special ed with reviewing all of our tuitions to make sure that the stuff that's encumbered should be encumbered and those kids are still in programs or if programs have changed, that those numbers have been updated. So I'm not giving out any false information as we go through that. And, you know, we are planning, planning ahead. My goal would be as we approach the end of year, knowing what we know now about next year is to put any savings into using anywhere that we would have used maybe school choice money to use that instead of the school choice and save our school choice moving forward. As you know, I asked for Chromebooks. We are looking to use some grant money for that and I'm hoping to use any savings for those additionally before we hit any school choice money. I do anticipate savings. I just don't have a dollar for you yet and I don't want to put something out there that is unrealistic. But I do expect to have some savings and a lot of those, the message that we're getting from the state now is, you know, buy now. Look at your supplies now, look at your things now for next year, anywhere that you can save going into next year. To help you out next year is your, is a good bet. And those are things that I'm looking at and projecting for now. At the state level, we listened to this morning, the Department of Ed, we listened to their board meeting. For this year, they are planning to continue all funding. So we don't expect to see any cuts this year for anything. The Federal Cares Act came out and they supplied additional funding to support schools. But they are saying that we probably won't see any of that money this year. That'll help us next year and into 2022. That money is, will be available to spend through September 30th of 2022. They're going to divvy that money up using our Title I allocations. So by, by how your need is by community. So I'm hopeful that'll help us. They said about 90% of the funds will be used and dispersed using the Title I calculation. The remaining 10% will be distributed to towns that don't qualify for Title I. There are some communities that do not qualify and do not receive any Title I. So that 10% will be dispersed through them. But we're hoping to find out June, maybe early July, what that is for us. We're all anticipating that that may look similar. I think Mr. McCarron, maybe you, Mr. Hurtin, might have been around in our ARRA days when we had the ARRA funding coming through the state. When we, years ago, we're in a recession and the state came out with some ARRA funding to help communities and help school districts, keep employees and add additional programming. There were a lot of reporting that came along with that. So that's kind of what we're anticipating with these funds. We are being told that we'll have discretion to use them in a variety of ways. But like anything else, you know, we're expecting the work on the tail end of that with reporting. And that's okay. You know, anything we can do to help, I'm willing to, the reporting is just part of the process and that's not a problem. We're also waiting to hear about our National School Lunch Program and looking for some additional funding for that to help out with our school meals program. We have been told that we're getting reimbursed at the free rate for everything. Before it was a portion at the free and a portion at the paid rate. Everything is going to be paid at the free rate and I'm not sure if there's going to be anything additional on top of that. But again, we have all of our food staff working. And so I'm anticipating that revenue coming in is not going to quite meet the expenditures that was, we're paying and we can't run those accounts in the deficit. So anything we can do to help our food service account with any surplus we have too, which I, which I believe we'll be able to cover, will be important moving forward for our school lunch program. I don't know, did I miss anything, Dr. Gogan? We've had so much going through.
So much information. We really are information overload. I think the good news is that this year is going to be okay for us, and we really need to start to think about what next year could potentially look like. The state emergency fund and the amount of money that will be distributed to schools is going to be very helpful. It is a lot of information that we've been digesting.
Yeah. Absolutely. So that concludes the FY '20 Budget Update. If anybody has any questions about that. No? Okay. I can jump into the FY '21 Budget Update if you'd like. Okay. So as we, another update that we got today, which is related to the FY '21 Budget, is the timeline for the state budget. As you know, typically, we go through steps and processes where they're approving the budget. The governor comes out with his, the House weighs a mean, and then the Senate weighs a mean, comes out with theirs. Well, that budget timeline has been delayed, and they have revised it because they're waiting on updated tax revenue estimates as well as the non-tax revenue before they come out again. There is talk that those two committees, they might just, instead of having individual meetings, might combine and have one joint meeting and come to an agreement together, a resolution together. So we don't know of any appropriations at this point. It's all a wait-and-see. We're waiting for the state on that, and it is on their radar, and they look forward to hopefully meeting before the end of June and sometimes June, late May, to get some updated numbers so we can plan and progress moving forward. But they're kind of tightening up their timeline too, and they are talking about a potential joint meeting to come out with some budget numbers moving there. And as Dr. Gogan said, we are just anticipating and planning appropriately and trying to just prioritize what our needs are for next year, taking a look at our current FY '21 budget, and just going through and prioritizing what we think of importance to, to the budget, and then taking a look and we'll wean it down from there as we need to. I've also had ongoing conversations with the town administrator and the town accountant, and they're basically doing the same thing on their, on their end. They're not getting ahead of themselves, but they're prioritizing what they put into budget. So as, as information becomes available, we can take the right steps and act and sit down as a team and meet and pair back.
Sounds good. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Perangeli? And again, just a reminder, obviously, the town election and the town meeting has been delayed to mid to late June, and so hopefully, as we get closer to town meeting, we'll all have a better sense of what the revised Chapter 70 funding will look like coming out of the state.
I hope so. I hope so, because there were some talks of potential, if those things can't happen for some reason, if we get to that. Regional districts have gone into what they call a 1/12 budget, and where they operate on 1/12 of their budget going through, basically, it pays the bills. That's what it does.
The FY '20 budget of the current budget.
Correct. And basically, all that would do is just, you know, pay your bills. You cover your payroll and your bills, and that's it. There has been a little bit of grumbling about maybe that coming into play for local communities, which is something typically we haven't done. But again, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. You know, I'm hopeful that those decisions and we'll have some, a better idea of our budget numbers come June, and that'll help us out moving into FY '21.
Very good. Any other comments? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next item under New Business is School Choice Discussion and Vote. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. You have the document in front of you. Presented what our projected enrollment would be for next school year. And as we have done last year, we have presented a current choice cap by school level. We would like to cap Park Abbott 140 students per grade level. Webster Middle School, 150 students per grade level, and Bartlett High School, 60, 160 students per grade level. And we'd like to stick with our plan of cutting off school choice applications at October 1st.
And just for the public's information, based on the projected numbers, and these are all projections, we would only be accepting school choice in grades seven, and then nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the committee? None, I will entertain a motion to approve the school choice numbers as presented.
So moved.
Sorry, did I miss the second again? So the motion was made by Member Blythe, seconded by Member Siddiqui. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, you should pull the committee, please.
Member McCarron?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui? Member Napparada?
Yes.
Chairman Hurt?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Memorandum of Agreement, WEA COVID-19 Remote Learning. For those who may be watching, the WA is the Webster Education Association, and since my wife is a member of the WEA, I am recusing myself and asking Mrs. Siddiqui to please chair this agenda item.
Dr. Gogan, can you give us some information about this?
I can. I'm going to share my screen. Whoops, wrong one. Sorry about that. I'm just trying to show off here, and I put the wrong one up. Okay. I do want you to know that we have worked side by side and continue to work side by side with our teachers' union, and this memorandum of understanding memorandum of agreement, we joke about it, which one it's going to be, has been a collaborative effort. I am meeting weekly with the president and co-president of the WEA. We, since, prior to us closing school, have been working on what kind of structures, how can we promote remote learning with our teachers, and we have had 100% buy-in. This agreement reflects our, what is currently going on, and speaks about evaluations. It speaks about a teacher's responsibilities to use their personal time if they're not going to be working, speaks about end-of-the-year summative informative ratings, how they, how they will be determined, and it speaks about just what we're doing, and it just puts it in an agreement form, how we're going to continue to communicate. I am so proud of our teachers and, you know, being a superintendent and talking with other superintendents, our staff have really risen to the occasion, are doing whatever they need to do, and the fact that we're memorializing this in an agreement is a good thing. So I strongly recommend your support for this.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Laura, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarron?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Member Napparada?
Yeah.
Chairman Hurt?
No. Next item on the agenda is Review Transfer Signing of Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers. Mrs. Perangeli, I assume once again, this warrant that was presented to us has been signed?
It is, is not signed yet.
Okay. So again, per, I forget which law it is, I know it's one of the laws we voted on at the beginning of the year, public bodies are allowed to designate a warrant and payroll designee, as well as a backup reach. And so since we're not in person to physically sign the warrant as we normally would do, the information is presented to us, and if there are any questions or concerns at this time, I would ask if any members have any questions for Mrs. Perangeli regarding the warrant that was given to us. Actually, I'm wondering, Mr. McCarron, if, since we're meeting remotely, we normally wouldn't do this, but do you think we should approve it with a roll call, since we're not signing it like we normally would? Or Mrs. Siddiqui?
I don't know. What did you do last meeting?
We actually, it was already signed. Yeah.
Don't know.
I don't think it hurts that the committee.
Just to say, it probably doesn't hurt to approve it.
Yeah.
Again, for those watching, normally, we would sign the warrant physically at the meeting, and that's our vote as far as approving it. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the warrant as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, you should pull the committee, please.
Member McCarron?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yeah.
Member Napparada?
Yes.
Chairman Hurt?
Yes. And before we adjourn, let me just once again wish everybody, obviously, like colleagues and administrators, but especially everyone in the town, I hope everyone is doing well, that our children and their families are safe, and hopefully, we will continue to do the best that we can under these pretty amazing circumstances. So I thank everybody for their attendance this evening and all the hard work that's going into continuing to run the school district. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, you should pull the committee, please.
Member McCarron?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yeah.
Member Napparada?
Yeah.
Yes, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.